The answer will come out of that process, to contract the best forward deal for our citizens. We don't control natural gas prices nationally, but we can look for the best deal just as CLECO does every day in that bundle we all get and then have to share. Rates, different story. Rates are set by this body. You are the rate-making authority and no one else. It has nothing to do with the administration. We have some alternate rates based on, that are consumption-driven. I have started the process and I have a draft of an item under 26-89.2, which is the commercial rate structure, so that we can be more competitive with a CLECO or other places. That would call for, and by the place I mean, private companies that are out there doing it, to the extent you guys can be private as heavily as you regulate. But that would involve incentive-based rates and it would involve potential demand schedule rates. The problem with that is, you always gotta pay the piper somewhere else, and we cannot involve ourselves, and I know you've already expressed, you don't want to balance any lessening of a rate somewhere else on the balance, on the backs, rather, of our residential customers. So, to the point. Contract the best forward deal, consider equity options in the future, perhaps buying in again to an item like we did with Rotomaker 2. Those are all options that we can do to get a better deal for our residents. The only other way that you sitting here today can affect the residents' bottom line immediately is to lower your rate schedule, which you already know hasn't been changed in a long time and would cause us problems in then meeting our budgetary needs. The system must pay for its operations, maintenance, and capital. That's our future. It has to do that, or you're giving away a service which we're prohibited from doing. So, with that in mind, again, we come back to this thing that's been looming over our heads called the CLECO litigation. Getting that resolved is critical because it tells us where we're gonna be in a forward deal. And there are lots of options, y'all are considering several, and we need to be mindful of that. If something in that mix changes, puts you in a better position, then you can consider a rate change. But at this point, it would be premature for Mr. Cannella to recommend residential rate restructuring without having studied those items. And Marcus tells me he's got three studies that were already done at the council's behest. I would suggest that you look at those studies and consider where we are, because we're way behind in other parts of the utility. The electric utility is funding and paying for other parts, and we need to bring that up to part two.
Okay, Mr. Lawson and Mr. Silver.
I agree with one thing, making sure that if we get studies, we utilize them. At last, that he caused me trepidation because it was gonna hit the truly engine of that, the gas prices, I think, were suggested to go up some 18 percent. Which I agree with and oppose. But that certainly affects, before, I want to make one other point. I'm very, very interested in saying something, certainly I can lure businesses in here, any progressive city certainly would do that, but I'm also interested, on the other end of the scale, where we are truly into ratepayers, that we find a way to give them a preferred rate list, following, I talked about this, such that maybe they pay a reduced amount based on so much consumption. So as we work to lure businesses, I hope that we continue to work to get an affordable rate to those that are truly struggling to pay these utilities.
Mr. Silver?
I think in view of what's said, and in view of the fact that our biggest problem right now is trying to resolve our problem with CLECO, I would like to put all of this on hold. I'm worried about some other things, until this thing, once this is resolved, it'll answer a lot of questions. And I'm gonna conclude this discussion.
Sure. The only thing I'd interject here, and we don't want to establish a rate for anybody that would be adverse to the city or to the consumer, but the structure of rates has to be based on the cost that the city pays. And we need to bring those things into line at some point in time, which I'm sure this council will do when it's time. But right now, I agree with Mr. Silver, and Mr. Cannella also made mention of this in our discussions earlier today, that all of us have, are bound by confidentiality agreement with the court, and we really can't discuss very much as far as this case is concerned, our rates and such.
Discussing, you may not like consequences.
I saw Judge Drell in lunch today, and he said, he said, "Don't my head?" Is there any other business you have something?
I just had, one thing that doesn't get mentioned is, in the water department, we're replacing valves that were stalled in 1910 and 1923.
I think we oughta go back to manufacturer for warranty.
I don't know if they exist, but I just want y'all to know that we have an aging infrastructure as well, and that it's a balancing act, trying to provide the funds necessary to maintain an aging structure like we have. And our lines are not new, and it takes revenue, and it takes, it takes money and manpower to meet the needs of our citizens.
And one thing, on that same vein, I don't think, Charles and I were on the council at the time, I don't think anybody else was, when we had the catastrophic cost of replacement of gas lines. We had to replace almost everything that was downtown to Bolton Avenue, Pope Street, all through there, because actually, the lines had deteriorated to such a point that there were no more lines, there were just holes in the dirt that the gas was going through. It was, we were losing about 15 percent or greater, wasn't it, of the gas that we were, that was going through, that we metered in and then charged out, it was about 15 percent loss.
But you had, you had oil field pipes.
Yeah, well, I mean, those have all been, hopefully, that would've been.
This street down there about to blow up, they had so many leaks down there, Third Street.
It rained and bubbled out there. One thing I'd like to ask Marcus is that, I don't know about anybody else on the council, but at a convenient time, with, and with the mayor's permission, I, as one councilman, would like to go out and, when they go out to the well fields, I've never seen that area, and we can organize and make it official where the news media can go, we can go one at a time, but at some point in time, I'd like to go see that.
Well, take it when it's not raining.
Do you have any other questions?
Quick question.
That wasn't fast enough.
Mr. Crutchfield, certainly those good folk that work with him do a tremendously good job, there's something that continues to burden me, and I hear about it, is that topic of utility theft, and I know y'all have been trying to crack down on it. Is there anything else we can do from a funding perspective to help those stealing utilities, whether using different social security numbers or addresses, another case may be, to stealing meters, what can we do? The problem is, we don't have, everybody not a Mother Teresa out there is on our utility system, yeah, literally stealing and getting more and more creative stealing utilities.
They are, Mr. Lawson?
Can you take Mr. Lawson's meter, buddy?
When it's speaking out.
He certainly has a lot of knowledge of this.
My switch is hitting on the inside of the wall.
I'll update the council a little bit. We did a utility theft sweep a few weeks ago, and I think in the neighborhood of 178 locations were stealing utilities, and either by stolen meters or jumper wires across the meter pans and things of that nature. We organized that. The best thing, the best, I guess, way that we have with detecting that is our meter readers. I mean, they're out there every day going from door to door, which I guess is one argument in favor of meter readers as opposed to some kind of automated program. But those guys are out there every day, they know if an address, you know, if it's not on their list, then it's supposed to be off, and if there's a meter there that's turning, well, it's pretty obvious what's going on. So they make note of that, take it back to the office, and they go out, supervisor goes out and checks on that, and then we try to organize times when we can get with the police department and the utility, the light department and others, and go out and take care of those things on the weekends, when we can do a lot of them at one time and efficiently use the workforce. But funding-wise, I think we have, we have what we need in that area, it's just a little bit of overtime on the weekends to get those operations done. And when we have a full staff of meter readers, it allows them more time to check things instead of just, hey, that was not on my list, I'm gonna hurry up and get done because I'm behind, kind of deal. So, I appreciate you recognizing that, because it is a problem. We ask the citizens to be aware of what's going on around them. We do get reports from citizens about things that are going on at your neighbor's house from time to time, because in the end, the other ratepayers are the ones who end up paying for it, you know. All theft, you know, theft from any retail location is paid for by the other people that shop at that retail location, and the same thing goes for utilities. So if you see, I would ask all the citizens that see something suspicious going on to report it so that we can investigate it and possibly stop some theft of utilities and lower the utility bills that way.
David, while you're on that subject, if you know, because I don't, what are the penalties for the utility theft, and does it vary with the amount? If, in other words, if we could prove somebody stole a thousand dollars, that felony theft, that they go prison for?
The penalty that we have in place right now is a $150 penalty for tampering with each utility. So if you, if you are tampering with the water, water metering device, you know, if you turn the water meter back on after it's been turned off, or the electric meter, and/or gas, it could be up to $450 if all three services are tampered with. But that does not go up the next time, it's $150 each again the next time.
Your opinion, should it be amended?
We probably should look at that and definitely graduate that rate and get some stiffer penalties. And it's not, it's not a felony.
But you made some arrests, too.
Yes.
Y'all made some arrests that day.
We definitely made some arrests that day. It was somewhere around 80 or 90, I think, warrants or whatever they issue when we're out there, we don't actually take them to jail, give them a court.
Could you recommend that the administration come back with a little more severe penalty and we can adopt that?
Well, I think what we should do is look into it, see what other folks are doing, find out where we can go legally with it, and then the other thing I'd be interested in is prosecution of amounts that are greater than the felony level, and make sure people know that we're gonna do that. And we need to check with the DA or someone like that to see where we need to go with that. But I think we just need to have somebody in the administration, or ask the mayor to have somebody to get all that stuff together and present us options that we can go forward with.
I'll bring some information to the mayor, and we'll come back with a recommendation in the next minute.
What would be a reasonable length of time?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, we'll have that.
Two minutes, but Marcus, you have something?
That's what I wanted to talk about.
Is there any other business for utilities, thank you for whoever had the next minute or two minutes.
They jumping the water beans with radiator.
That's been safe for the children, Beaker.
Okay. Came back good.
I'd like to call community development meeting to order. President, myself, and Mr. Smith, and Mr. Johnson, members committed, but he's not at present time, but let's hear from the administration to consider final adoption of ordinance amending the housing rehabilitation, deferment payment loan program guidelines for all occupied structures.
Mr. Marshall, I'll address that. It's item number 31 in your books, and you might want to refer to that, because the mandatory guidelines are attached behind the fact sheet in your book. All of you are familiar with the rehab program that's funded under the CDU block grant and the town plan, which are HUD funds, and we are charged with the duty of administering those funds pursuant to your stringent guidelines of HUD. And Brenda Ray has for many years done excellent job administering those funds and those programs, and she's subject to many audits, and we've been very fortunate that we've been in compliance quite well throughout the years. But we need to go back and do some task cleaning with regard to the home rehab program. Executive order, HUD executive order 11988 requires an eight-step process review when activities are proposed or impact a 100-year flood plan. The eight-step process review must conclude that there's no practical alternative to entering the flood plan to achieve the project's objective. If there are applications for the home rehab program that are inside the flood plan, and there are applications for the program that are outside the flood plan, under this executive order, we have to address the ones outside the flood plan first. So we have people applying for the rehab program, and we come in and we take them first come, first served. It's a very cumbersome process, they have to get, they approve ownership, they have to prove income, they have to gather up documents and go through the process. They can be approved and put on the list, first come, first served. But according to HUD, and this is confirmed through your office in Washington DC, we have to go down the list, and if the first one is outside the flood plan, we can avoid that. If the second one is inside the flood plan, we skip over it. And we have to complete all of the ones that are outside the flood plan first before we go back and do the ones inside the flood plan. In the recent years, we've been doing about 10 rehab projects per year. We run into some problems with not requiring contractors, we've only got one contractor that will do the work, and so we are limited in the number of those houses that we're able to do. What Brenda Ray is proposing to be in compliance with HUD is to exclude all homes that are within the flood plan from being eligible for the rehab program. Now, as a practical matter, we're never gonna get to those homes anyway. Under the current status, they can apply, and they go through the process, and they create more work in Brenda Ray's department, but we can't do the work in those areas.
Mr. Lawson? So, that's, I guess the thing that concerns me is, I think, I'm trying to recall from my business, 75 percent of the homes that need it the most are made in flood zones, the city of Alexandria, in the urban areas. So based on what, not your suggestion, but HUD, I appreciate that, does not, King gives them, the folk that need it the most won't qualify, it will be other areas that may be less needed. That's common, because basically, now I don't know how we deal with that. I mean, it wipes out almost all of Mr. Marshall's, Mr. Smith's district.
Not so much my district, but Mr. Hobson's district.
Who was qualified.
Yes, qualified, but the problem is too, that they never, you know, a lot of these areas that they don't even flood, but they've never been taking out the flood zone area. And that's where we got a problem at, for these jurors who's been handling that three years back, and I don't know.
Mr. Lawson, if I can address your comment, actually, it's running about 50/50, the homes that we receive applications for within the flood plan are about 50 percent. Now, the good news is, and I think I mentioned this to you last time, is that we're really looking to some alternatives for the rehab, for the rehab program. Brenda Ray and I are very interested in developing a relocation program, a home replacement program, I should say, because even when you do the rehab, you're still left with an old home very often in a flood plan. And if we could implement a home replacement program, I really think our homes would be much better than.
Home replacement? You said home replacement or?
Home replacement.
Okay.
Where you turn over your home and you get this new home.
Of course, the only question I have in that would be, like, say, for seniors that's on fixed income, would it, say, if you, okay, you take the home and you do the swap, even swap, that person does not incur any debt other than what they are normally with. I mean, you know, you're talking about your medication, your utility bills and food.
It would be a deferred program, a deferred loan program, just like the home rehab. You know, when we do the home rehab, they can have $25,000 worth of improvements done to the home, and there's a mortgage placed on the house that they really are not making payments on, but at the end of 10 years, that loan is extinguished, it goes away. You're only five years into your loan and you sell your home, part of that's going to be recaptured.
Yeah, okay, but that was, that would be the sign process, but after, say, 10 years or 15 years, it's a forgiven loan.
Right, with a greater amount of money, it may have to be a longer period then, you understand, correct?
No, I just think we need to, I think we need to grab something to our congressional people, you know, and tell them about the effects of this. I know the grabbing and draining, but whatever we spoke and working with, we bought some land off of us for the tension fund. And so, somebody, they said that wasn't worth it, that we was gonna drop to the level of water in the whole city of Alexandria, and they were selling the tension fund. And then we gonna put it back in the channel, so, but they said, okay, we're not, we're not gonna do that, they're not even working out a plan, we're taking it all the way to the river. And I'm just wondering where they are with that. Now, because I know Samtown, Woodside, a long time ago was considered a disaster area, but we building house, and we closing ditches, and I mean, it's really upgrading, it's beautiful now, and people are moving in. And we come across the Sugar House Road, I mean, we're getting, still have people moving out of the neighborhood now. We have new homes that's coming on wrestling in that area, and I'm gonna knock on wood, we have, I've been flooded five times, but since we put those pumps on Charlotte and KLM Village, we haven't had really, you know, the city crew and everything been on top. But we can't get out of, these people are still in the flood plan, but they haven't got flood. And I just wanna thank the state, I think, in just what they're doing. You know, they actually, these people, I know you're saying that's a good deal to relocate, but that's also gonna be a hardship on some people that can't afford, because a long time ago, those people, you know, they moved off the farm and somewhere else, and they moved into a certain area, because that's all they can afford.
Right, but unfortunately, we don't get to make the regulations, their HUD regulations, but I think you might be talking about the Alexandria, the Gulf of Mexico drainage project, and a meeting in the morning?
They had the big ditch, they used to call that the big ditch, it was gonna stand. They got away from that, and they're going down to, what, Poland, they're gonna reach sea level, go through Charlotte, go to Poland, reach sea level, and then go across the river. And that's the, that's the new idea. We put up $20,000 about two years ago, to help them in that, to match some money with the Corps of Engineers, and that was the federal study that we're doing.
I'm meeting with them in the morning in the mayor's conference room, Mr. Smith, if you would like to come, because I know you were involved in the project from the inception, and you have a lot of history on that, maybe you could come and share some of your. Is it nine o'clock upstairs in the morning? But I would appreciate your participation. If you have any questions on the amendment to the guidelines for the rehab program, I'll try to answer them. Brenda Ray's here, she's much more knowledgeable than I am.
The only thing that I suggest is that, and I don't know if we need to have another meeting or what, outline the areas in which are affected by the flood, the new plan that they have. Those areas are outlined, and the people know ahead of time, because we're gonna be the ones that get the calls, once they go apply and say, I was on the list and, you know, I can't get on the list because I'm in a flood area. We could combat it a little bit if, you know, if it's set out ahead of time, you know, say, stated, you know, X Street is in flood area, so you can't apply, you understand?
Mr. Smith, they do have those flood maps and that information in community development, and when those people come into a flood, they can be given that information.
We are, Reverend Kirk, can you, you know, give your name and everything?
We heard his pastor, Bright Morning Star Baptist Church in Pineville. And what I want to comment is that what Mr. Smith was saying concerning fixed income people, my mother lived on Sixth Street, I don't know, Third, I've been out of her house for over 20 some years, I have not seen the flood there, and she spends $600 a year flooding insurance. They did some work on the house some in the early 80s, which she needs some more work done, and it's costing her each year, the flooding insurance is going up, but we're not flooding, and I want to just address that concern in that, because we do have elderly people that are on fixed income, and we need to still more concern about that. No flooding, why pay flooding insurance? And I'd just like someone to just tell me what we're gonna do about that.
Mr. Lawson? We've been trying to battle it, unfortunately, we're not FEMA. FEMA is responsible for the flood insurance. Now, we started when I was on the police jury, flood insurance committee, in which we have some representatives, they're gonna do what they call LIDAR, study, they fly over, they can determine the elevation of a particular home within the community, which may alleviate some of the costs. But the biggest problem we have, and you're right, is that we have a 100-year flood plan that have not flooded. And the unfortunate part is, if they get a rehab, let's say, of $13,000, $14,000 of flood insurance, it's $4,000 a year, so it's cost prohibitive. So it's a huge problem that we're encountering, but I think some active work with our congressional delegation is what we need to do, try to combat that.
Because I can't see my mom in that program, they're trying to establish, living there all 50 some years, and then, you know, there's some sentimental value there, you know, moving into a new house, being in her cell, so thank you for asking the question.
Can I ask a question? When I came here 10 years ago, the county was also under a flood plan, 10-year flood plan, and we commissioned, and we got together.
Ms. Wildworth, would you please come to the podium over there and give your name and everything, 'cause it's a public meeting, you know?
I don't know about this much, I know you. I'm Gloria Wordsworth. Thank y'all. We commissioned, we went to our congressional representatives to have the flood plan removed from the county, and we're there, it's gone, it's no longer there for real. So we can now go in and actually fill houses. Why can't Alexandria do the same thing? It takes a little while, but it's worth the effort, rather than have old people give up their homes that they've worked and paid for all of their lives, just let's go to the congressional representatives and let them remove the 100-year flood plan.
And Ms. Wildworth, see, but the thing about it is, back then, when you did that, you didn't have FEMA.
Yes, we did.
No, you didn't.
Yes, we did.
Well, I want to make that which.
We just didn't work with FEMA down there, too, okay?
Okay, well.
So I'm saying, if you're working one little small time, why don't work in a bigger city?
Well, we're gonna look into that, that's what Ms. McGills is, right now, that nine o'clock meeting tomorrow and all of that, we're working on it.
And I got one other question, 'cause I don't understand, what is this replacement thing they talking about? I miss it.
We might have to discuss that at another meeting, right now, I'm into, we've been to two other committee meetings.
Mr. Marshall, it sound like you just trying to put me on hold about housing, but I'm sorry, because I know I am a certified housing counselor, I came in here with it, and they talking about doing stuff to this area, this is my home, too. Mr. Marshall, you need to go back to the table. No, I'm not listening to you. You're gonna be ruining the staying we have.
Ms. Lawson, retirement is of the essence.
Time, nothing, you don't wanna answer the question, 'cause you don't have the answers.
That's your opinion.
I know you don't.
Is there anything else?
Can I just say one thing? You know, we are going through a recirculation process with FEMA on the flood plates right now, and the police jury, and all the levy districts are involved in that, so hopefully we'll have some good luck coming down there.
Do the paperwork.
Move, move a second. Let them in for the full council.
Mr. Lawson, you got it.
Mr. Smith, committee on...
Let me get it.
Mr. Hoffs, Mr. Smith is out of the room. The matter on the small emerging business development program, we're, we're still working on the final language to get more inclusive, and we've asked for two weeks to finish it.
Promise me in two weeks.
It'll be finished in two weeks. Twenty meeting Thursday, for some keep me there, Mr. Lawson. And I wanna know, we wanna make sure it's right, and in the meantime, we are finishing the request of our chief of disparity study. And I do not know if Mr. Smith has any other matters he wishes to bring up, I do know that there is at least one resolution.
Well, I'll bring it around loose in the next minute.
Bring it here.
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and do an economic development?
Okay.
Why is Mr. Harry not running until three years from now, committed by the state? So go ahead and into economic development, then, our honor, economic development committee, members, members present to yours truly, Mr. Silver. Item number one is to hear from the administration concerning surveillance cameras.
You wanna lay it over? Yes.
Can we lay out item number one over? To hear from the administration concerning video bingo, I don't think we've had an opportunity to get together. One thing that we are concerned about is making sure that we put more money into the charities and not at the expense of the hall owners. I don't know if you all are ready to...
We, we know that that's a concern you have, some of the operators and other folks have asked for a meeting with me first, and, and I don't mind doing that, and I think then we come out, we tell the public what they are, and we make them come and talk about it, but in a way, we need their expertise about some things that happen, and we'll make them prove that this is where the numbers are and so forth. But that's up to you, whatever you think we need to do.
Why don't, why don't we wait until we meet with them, and then come back with something that makes sense, and we'll put money back into the charities, which is what this is supposed to be about anyway.
Yeah, and Mr. Hoffs Rickers, who runs, who owns the biggest hall, has asked to participate. He talked to the mayor, we told him we would get together.
Okay. All right, item number three is to hear from this Donna Andries with Rapids Parish Sales Tax Office Occupational License Report. Thank you for coming again here. May I speak? Can I come back to the police jury?
I don't know. Good afternoon, I'm Donna Andries, I'm the sales tax collector for Rapids Parish, and I appreciate you all inviting me to come and visit with you today, it's always a pleasure to be able to bring good news to you. Last year, and I don't wanna talk just about occupational license, I wanna, you know, toot our horn a little bit about sales tax, but last year, our office collected over $110 million for the jurisdictions within Rapids Parish. And the city has three sales tax levies. The first one became effective over 30 years ago, and the first year that that tax was levied, you collected about $2.9 million. Last year, that tax generated 14 million, so it's definitely grown since the time of inception. You have another 1% tax that became effective June 1st of 1988, it was originally a 10-year renewal, it will become permanent next year on June the 1st. And finally, you have a half-cent tax that became effective in April of '05. Your combined collections for those three levies in 2006 was approximately $34 million. In 2003, we came to you all and asked for the opportunity to collect your occupational license, your insurance premium taxes, as well as some other miscellaneous permit fees, like alcohol beverage, chain store, charitable gain, and you allowed us to do that. So we began collections January 1st of 2004. The taxes and fees that were generated in 2003 were around 1.8 million, that was the last year that the city collected those. In 2007, we estimate those permit fees to be around 2.7 million, which is a 39% increase over 2003. Part of that growth is related, part of that is related to the growth within the city, but the largest majority of it is related to compliance with your ordinances.
Forgot about the intemperate vendors.
Intemperate vendors?
Yeah.
Yeah, we get quite a few of those too. In 2006, we collected 2.4 million at a cost of $108,000 to the city. We also have a very fine audit staff, they collect plus or minus a half a million dollars for the city each year, and overall, that staff collected about 2.6 million last year, and these are revenues that would go uncollected, but for the work of the audit staff. Our number one goal with our auditors is to educate the taxpayers, so that they can voluntarily comply, thereby increasing your revenues. They look for overpayments as well as underpayments, and we always try to be fair to everyone, we don't want anyone paying any more or any less than what is due. In closing, I'd just like to thank all of you for entrusting us with the collection of your occupational license, and I'm fortunate to have one of the finest staffs around, I think, and if there's anything we can do for you to assist you with any other tax collection matters, we'd be glad to help you.
Thank you, now, you did exactly what we thought you were gonna do, you improved the train on our selections, so thank you again.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the vendors? I can move on to item number four, this is one I just put on here that I hope we have on it consistently. I talked with a couple of city councilmen in Pineville, and I have to be talking with someone that was familiar with the Waterway Commission, as well as our senator, Matt Pearson, and representatives. We have not done a collaborative effort as a city with a river in between another city. I would like to see us mayor, you may, I'm certain, you know, I've had some conversations within the transition team, I'm certain, with the mayor field, but for us to develop an intentional, deliberate strategy to finally do something about the river, we always talk about it, but we don't do anything about it. It's a beautiful piece. I keep hearing about Shreveport, Boja City, and what they've done, which is very good. I, I think the Red River Waterway Commission bill will be very, very hard pressed to tell us no, we have a collaborative effort that's going on between the cities of Alexandria and Pineville, and I think it'll be good for Pineville, when they see a beautiful setting on the river, and good for Alexandria when we see the same, well, I just wanted to put that out there, so that we can at least empower the administration, give you all whatever you need to take off and continue running to get the river built.
We, we think ASAD, as y'all know, met the other day, and there's some things there that can turn into that. ASAD is, is an economic development group that has been charged with looking at this whole area for river fund development, we think the Bentley has a role to fit in there as well, we are moving forward with it now with a lot more deliberate, deliberate speed, Mr. Lawson, and so I think at their next meeting, you're gonna see some further announcements about our commitment to that, from the administration standpoint. You've already committed to it in terms of some significant funding so forth to do a study, and so we'll look forward to the, that next meeting with ASAD and coming out with some, with some items. They met last week, and I hope some of the viewers got to see it, it was broadcast on January 4th.
Well, our biggest, I guess, attraction with the rivers, that levy, but the technology has caused us to, well, actually put us in a position to have something, I think, where you can cut it to the river and make it where you can travel a lot easier, so hopefully all of it come out there. I think they're developing a master plan, something?
They are, the levy while protecting us is the biggest obstacle of some efforts about revitalization, there are, as you point out, ways to wall those areas and not have to have the levy, and the structure it is now, and that's what they're looking for.
And we can get ASAD to come back and do a report at the next meeting, epidemic, what their intentions are with the river, and talk about that collaborative effort between Rapids Parish, actually, all entrances in the parish, this river belongs to, to get that done. Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, 'cause I, it's, I, I know myself, I've seen how Shreveport and Boja have really expanded, and the same river that runs through there runs through here, and we need to do what we can for economic development, to utilize the river and the levy system that we've got here. We got a beautiful walkway, if we could do more with it, widen it, there's a lot of activities that go on in the, in, you know, that can be utilized for it.
One immediate thing, Mr. Smith was here, I, I, I don't know what happened, but the thing that we need on that with a sense of urgency is a restroom, of a beautiful amplification, since several hundred people are there, absolutely no restroom on inside, so...
Have the river.
Thank you, appreciate that. Let's make sure that's a topic too, one minute, anything else need to come before you go?
One, one last thing before Mr. Gillis, just so, nobody says we're having a secret meeting or passing around votes or anything. I, I've been asking the members of the public, knows if people wanna go, if you guys wanna go to the bond commission, the first hearing on that will be tomorrow, it starts at 10:00. Tomorrow at 10:00. If we are last on the agenda, I've confirmed as of today, we are in fact on the agenda, for sure, that's right, that's correct. That's from Mr. Kennedy's office, I've spoken with Senator McPherson, I think Bill has talked to some other folks, I know that all of you have been lobbying, Representative DeWitt and others, the more, the mayor and the more that are there usually does help, I don't know, I haven't been given any indication where we are, but we are on the agenda, and I'll just tell you this, it's like going to court on, on the court docket, there's no telling when we'll come up. Bill, what time, last time, were you there till?
Well, I was there from about 9:30 until...
In the morning?
Close to, yeah, in the morning, and then I, we came up, or something, quarter, quarter five, I got home around 10:00. And the other thing is, is they have tendency to switch the agenda around too, you have the, you have two separate agendas, and they could very well flip them, and they all...
Two different agendas with...
Although we're last on the agenda, that doesn't necessarily mean we're last, they may decide...
Meaning you ended at 5:00 and you got home at 10:00, huh?
Well, I couldn't...
This is economic development, you gotta be at home.
If any of you decide that you in fact wanna go, and you won't have all your cell numbers, we're gonna be there and we can call when we think we're 15 minutes out, I just wanna make, you know, whatever we can do to accommodate y'all, we will, so let me know.
Say, before I close, Mr. Hoffs, man, we're at Pecados Morning for an interesting presentation was made to a teacher there, and she'll be here this afternoon, we're quite proud of her, we had an opportunity, Ms. McGill, and I think Lisa has been working with us as well, Lamar, to a studio, unbelievable, we've been talking about that, but I spoke with the teacher and told her we're very, very interested in moving forward expeditiously, to utilize the talents over there that expose our offerings in the city, so you all can come back to us in a couple of weeks to us, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Lawson, we have two matters, the first is a, an agenda fact sheet for introduction of an ordinance from the engineering department pertaining to the acceptance of a subdivision plan for the younger commercial car lots 1 and 2, which we would submit for introduction.
Well, it's a public work, it's...
The second matter involves a resolution that is done annually for the council, deals with the Bayou Classic and hospitality efforts that go on, Mr. Smith has, I think, the resolution actually for introduction. It's traditional that there is some activities that go on for economic development purposes over that weekend, the council invites participation by other agencies, not just the city, but GATA, England Authority in the past, I think the port in the past have participated, Mr. Smith would like to introduce a resolution.
Okay, this will be a resolution on provision of a hospitality suite at the Bayou Classic Promote Alexandria, you want me to read the whole thing?
I wanna recuse myself, so actually, I'm material, yeah.
Okay, every, every year we, we put this on, we also out of this, as you know, at Mardi Gras, I've already received a call from Dr. Farnell from Grandma, they're interested in coming back from Mardi Gras, and also, we get Southern University. Mayor, I'd like to ask you, that Ms. Harris, that, that Ms. Harris, Ms. Harris, last time, we, we were on, we, we set up a table, and we gave out, you know, Q on the red and other things that promote, I, I don't know what the cost, she know what the cost is down there. Also, I'd like to ask you for Mr. Vaughn, Ms. Vaughn, and Bill Hess, what we're trying to do that, that Friday evening is have a panel on economic development bill, Vaughn, you gonna, I want Vaughn and my, myself in the meeting with Mr. Jamie Mayo, they have executive person that deals with the Louisiana-Milceville Black Mayors and Louisiana-Milceville Black Caucus for the state, and we wanna, we wanna do something on economic development that Friday evening, it's gonna be a panel, if, if Ms. Jennings and Bill would work with them, and I, I think they, they have some names, we getting some, some names from the State Department and around there, that this panel, they gonna put this together, 'cause they have, they got a new program with, with the state that's very interesting to, it's, we say Louisiana-Milceville Black Mayors and Black Caucus, but it's for everybody, you know, we, Mr. Gillis was at the meeting before, and we had a diverse group, so this is another, this, this is another with, with Ms. Vaughn and all of them get it out, this is another will go out to all the mayors and the councilmen over the state that would like to come down and, and participate, but this will happen on a, on a, on a Friday evening, and I would like for them to sit and, and work with Ms. Melissa out of Monroe and that, and it has to do with Clico and Energy Corporation and all those people.
And I would be with us if I didn't mention that the Convention and Visitors Bureau is also an integral partner with the other rooms, Dr. Vaughn, Mr. Smith.
So it's a...
And it's a word, the expenditure, the money's appropriated, but by our procedures, we simply do a resolution to authorize the expenditures. And we look for others to participate with us. Thank you.
This is one, we got integrated back, and I think we don't, the city and the state, that we get both of the bands here. And then we promoting, uh, we promote our city, it's other, other cities down there be promoting, uh, uh, their, uh, cities as well. But when you, when you got activities, you got 62,000 people down there. Also, it's great to help try to rebuild New Orleans. I mean, everybody is...
Don't worry about New Orleans, don't worry about it. Black, no, I'm, we'll be doing it.
Yeah, you can go. He's a fan. Takes a motion.
And Greg is him, Dr. Greg, but you can go, don't worry about Greg.
Mr. Smith takes a, take a motion to put it on the floor, he said.
Okay. I saw, uh...
Eric Meyer.
You saw, we in legal committee now, huh? That's Smith, Johnson, and Mr. Lawson.
That's the second one.
Huh? Economic Development? Okay, I saw who, who else in there?
Who's in there?
I'm not in here. Eric?
Eric has a second.
Okay. Yeah, this is me coming for the Economic Development Committee.
I mean, you can close out, but... No, he just said that, just... Oh, okay.
Okay, that's been done. Probably works.
It's not, uh, next to jury.
We're hot?
That's been, okay.
You got the one thing.